Oh, oh. Is this the new owl?
No, this is just that thing.
Oh, moving. Yeah, it's not the owl. Thank you.
Yes.
We haven't met.
I'm Alex.
Nice to meet you.
I'll be too.
Yes.
The, it's six oh one. I called this meeting on September fourth of the Bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee to order. Held in the city hall energy conference room. Um, provide comments during the meeting. Phil, let us know. And you'll have, you'll be able to give your comment. Uh, maybe we have roll call?
Yes. Okay. Uh. Okay, Chair Daryl Yip.
Here.
Uh, Vice Chair Dylan Hingy.
Here.
Y'all let me know if I mispronounce your name. So, okay. Hingy. Okay, thank you. Um, Arian Guzman.
Yes.
Uh, Frank McCauley.
Here.
And Philip Holenback.
Here.
Alright, there's five all five of us here. Um, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, uh, public comments. How about the comments? Anyone in the room like a public comment?
They're all presenting.
No speakers. Alright, consent calendar approval of minutes. Um, does anyone have any comments on the minutes? I have some that I want on three D dot.
There was one table.
Oh yeah, I noticed that. Go ahead.
Uh, mentioned there are three separate transpiration, but it should be transferred.
Yes.
It already is. Okay.
Yes. So I'm just, I'm just gonna read this in the record. They already know. Um, the title of the minutes document. Was incorrect. Um, under my comment, under. Items from VPAC members, I requested an update on the SSF transportation projects near one oh one. Um, not just, I think I, I wanted to be more specific that includes things like the Utah overpass trades interchange and the shoreline protection and project. And then, it's a. Any other edits to the minutes? Okay, uh, do we want to vote on the minutes? Uh, make the motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Uh, do we vote or do we just vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Okay. Um, may I make a disclaimer? This is the first time I've been in this role before, so thank you for the, thank you for the prompt. Yeah, okay. Uh, Chair Daryl Yip.
Uh, yes, the minutes.
Okay. Vice Chair Dylan.
Yes.
Hingy. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Okay, Hingy. Okay. Um, Arian Guzman.
I have approved.
Uh, Frank McCauley.
Yes.
And Philip Holenback.
Great. Minutes are approved. Alright, administrative business. Engage SSF, we have Alex Henry. I'll let you introduce.
Sorry.
Introduce item number two.
Oh, great. Okay, we were talking because I was asking for validation. Okay. Item number two is engage SSF and we have Alex Henry, our public works program manager here to present tonight.
Hi guys.
So.
Just so I'm sure.
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, everyone. I'm Alex Henry from Public Works. Uh, I'm the program manager for operations. Uh. A little bit about what we do. We take care of the streets, some of the sidewalks, uh, fill potholes, repair asphalt, stuff like that. So we're primarily responsible for this. Big gutter in South City. Um, we also do some sidewalk repairs. Um, that gets a little bit more complicated, but we do um, some sidewalk repairs as well. Um. So I'm a good person to ask questions to during this meeting. If you have any, feel free to ask me about stuff like that. Um. What I'm gonna do for engage SSF is I'm gonna put my phone up on the screen to kind of walk you guys through the app. Um. To show you how to use it, if that makes sense. Um, if you have any questions while I'm talking, feel free to shout them out. You don't have to wait till the end. Uh, I know that's how I work. I might forget them by the end. So if you have a question, feel free to, to ask. Um. Go open this up here. Yep. Show on my screen like that. That's all.
Right? I didn't even know that was.
It's easier than talking through it.
It's amazing.
So the engage SSF app, this is the icon. You can download it on your smartphone.
I already have it.
Or you can get on the internet. Um, that's what this flyer we have printed out will show you how to do it from the internet if you want to do it at home. Um, same process. It's just you would do it from a computer instead of the, the smartphone. Um, when you click on this, uh. It'll open up this screen. Uh, how many issues we fixed? Uh, how many, yeah. So. What this app does is push to a different app called C Click Fix, which is where we primarily get all of our requests from. This is sort of just a vessel to get it to us, um, in the city. Uh. Public Works does the majority of, of requests. We're sort of the, the intended recipient of the majority of C Click Fix requests. Um, the reason I say intended recipient is because a lot of stuff. When people put it in, it, it sort of gets misplaced or, or they don't put it to the right intended target. Uh, so sometimes it takes a little while to get to us. Um. Right here under the camera, which is a little bit hard to see, is something that says new request. So if you click on new request, it's gonna open up this window right here, which. It's much easier for us to fix or repair the issue that you guys have. If there's a photo for us to kind of see. Kind of like we're doing now. It's easier. A picture's worth a thousand words, right? So if you're able to say, hey, we have this problem and there's a picture, might be easier for us to see, might be self-explanatory, but a picture always helps. Um, gives you a couple of different options to run through it. Uh, you can either use your camera in the moment. Hey, there's a puddle right here. Let me use the camera. It'll open up your camera. You could take a picture. If you have it in your photo library, you can use that as well. Um, for this one, we'll just do no photos since we don't have anything in here. Next thing it's gonna do, ask you for a location. You can hit this little button and allow you to, oh, it's because I'm not connected to the internet, but uh. You know, you center it where you're at, um, right now. Right here. On the annex. Um, once you find your location, up top, next. And then what this is gonna do, I'm sorry, you turn the internet off just so I don't get confused, but, um. Let's see, what's gonna happen here? Why aren't we working? Tech problems.
There we go.
There we go.
Ooh.
Alright, so ton of different categories for you to input your concern, um, that, that you want us to know about. Sometimes it's a little bit difficult for you guys to pick the right ones. Sometimes it's very simple, right? If you're concerned about a pothole, pothole, right? Um. There's a lot of different things in here. Try to pick the right category. If you're not sure, we're pretty good at figuring it out. Like I said, sometimes it just takes a little bit longer for us to get them. If it's, if it's miscategorized. Sometimes it goes to the wrong person. They have to re-categorize it. They might not be sure. So sometimes it just takes a little bit longer for us to get it. Uh, but we, we, all of them are gonna get seen. It just depends on if it's categorized right, how long it'll take to get to us, if that makes sense. So, um, depending on what you're putting in, you know, you can, uh, click on that. You can add your picture or not add your picture up top. In the description, you can write kind of whatever you want that you think will help us identify it, make it easier for us to see. There's a pothole on El Camino in the lane closest to the center divide. Something that makes it easier for us to determine where it might be. Um, whatever you think would help us. That's how we would use that information to determine where it is. Um. And then, you know, it asks you for some of your details, uh, that, that you can put in. And then, once you hit submit, it's coming to us. Um, this is, so this app primarily for. Identifying problems that we can correct. Um, this is not an app for, let's say you have a concern about. But hey, you know, or, or let, let's say you have a, a suggestion you'd like to make. This intersection seems like maybe we should do something like this with it. This isn't the app for that. This is for identifying problems like puddles or, you know, tree branch or, or, um, you know, there's a lot of stuff that, that is problematic that we can repair. Um, something like a concern or a suggestion for traffic improvement, that's a whole different thing, which is, um. Due to a traffic advisory committee. Um, but, but this app right here, primarily for identifying problems that, that we can repair. Um. Most likely through public works, but Parks does some tree work. So if there's branches hanging down or trees falling over, that will go to Parks. They would take care of that. Uh. And that's about the extent of it. Um. Questions?
You look at the data like overall, I mean, six, sixty-four thousand pieces of data. Do anyone look at it and say, oh, we keep getting a pothole in this spot?
We do. No, we do. Absolutely. We look and we get thousands. Public Works gets thousands of requests a year. Um. You wanna get into the weeds a little bit? A lot of it is for like illegal dumping. Um, we get a ton of illegal dumping plates, a ton of illegal dumping in this area downtown just because there's so many people and. You know, so many people eating and stuff like that. So a lot of it is illegal dumping, but yeah, we're always looking at it and sort of trying to determine how we can improve and, and you know, what we can do more proactively, stuff like that. But. Yeah, so pothole data, we use that data to kind of determine, hey, this street seems to be failing or with, with engineering to try to determine how. Our paving plan is gonna sort of work to, hey, we're having a lot of problems on this street. I know it wasn't due to be paved, but maybe we should bump it up because we're getting a lot of problems out here, stuff like that. But we're absolutely looking at the data regularly. Um, it's, it's a great tool for us to be able to look at all this stuff because this stuff's all coming from people in the public, right? So there's a lot of. It's great. You know, we have over a hundred miles of street in South City and we only have so many staff members, so we can't look at all of it every day, but, but with.
Probably someone does.
No, you're absolutely right. And with this tool, everybody's able to like, you know, if you walk the same street every day, you're gonna know it better than I will and you'll, you'll, hey, this sidewalk is messed up or this street looks, you know, like it's failing and. Oh, we didn't think about, you know, we, we haven't been down this road in a while and, and you might bring some to the attention that we haven't seen, right? So, um, it is a great tool and we do use it quite a bit.
One of the reasons why you're here, why we asked you to, um, give a presentation is because we're concerned about the quality of, um, streets. Uh, specifically for walking and biking. Is there like any. Areas that you took down through the data? That you have like changed your operations and gone there more often to maintain that area? Do you have any examples?
Um, so one that comes to the top of my head is, uh, East Grant. Um, sort of in between Gateway and Littleville, let's say, um, heavily traveled road by a lot of different forms of transportation, bikes, cars, trucks. Garbage trucks, semi trucks, right? A lot of people are traveling on that road. Um, has a bike lane that, that gets kind of catches a lot of the debris. So we've used that data along with some. C Click Fix requests for, for more service to improve our level of service out there and clean that for, primarily for bikers that are, that are commuting out on that road. Um, that, that have brought into our attention that, hey, there's a lot of debris built up over here and it's kind of getting a little bit hectic to travel on bike. Uh, you know, so, uh, we have used it. One of the examples that I, that comes to mind is that for sure. Yeah.
I have a second question. Um. The other one is, what is your relationship, or does the, the staff that work on Engage SSF's relationship with the police department? Because I submitted quite a few parking requests about like block sidewalks or crosswalks. Do you, you work together with the police department to like figure out enforcement or does the police department have its own separate?
So I don't know, but I, I, I'm assuming police has their own. We don't send requests to police. Yeah.
Oh, they just, they just, they have direct access to it?
Yeah, and so, like, good evening, Dave Boghouse, Deputy Director, Public Works. Um, anything that you submit through the C Click Fix that's a parking issue is sent directly to.
Okay.
So then I'll answer it using the other, uh, the first two words now.
It's one of the reasons that I'm saying it's so important to try to categorize it correctly because in that example, right, police gets notified, but if you were to put that in as parks. I know that doesn't make sense, but I'm just sort of using an extreme example. If you put a parking issue as parks, it would go to the Parks Department. They might not know who to send it to. And it would kind of hang in limbo for a while until somebody figured it out and put it into the right spot, right? So it could take. Quite a bit of time for it to end up in the right hands and it might have already rectified itself by that time, right? And it would have been no help. So it's, it's important to try because we get a lot of miscategorized things. Uh, mostly related to like debris or, or, you know, sometimes people will put illegal dumping in art because that's where it is, but they're not the ones who would necessarily clean it up. Um, so it's, it's hard and, and it's not anybody's fault. It's just difficult to kind of pick the right category and know sort of the way it works sometimes.
There's no way for you to send it back for recategorization or that seems.
There, no.
Law in your process.
Anybody can re-categorize it, but if you don't know. Uh, you know, it's, it's hard to know the way everything in the city works. So if you're not quite sure how it works. You know, if, if you were the Parks Department and you didn't know who was in charge of, of the parking, you might not put it to the right person. So it might take a little bit of time, but we absolutely have people that look at these and know which categories most of the stuff belongs in, but it's sometimes it just takes a few more days to get to the right spot.
Like you could just bounce around a little bit because if something got rather, I mean, for example, like I work in planning, but if I got an issue related to. Debris pickup, I might not know who to give it to. I might send, I know Matt, he sits over there, so I might send it to Matt, then Matt, you know what I mean? So it's just like, it's gonna get there. It's just.
Pick up the garbage?
Matt will pick up the garbage. That's what I asked him to do. It's gonna do it. Yeah, it's just, it's just an efficiency. It sounds like it's an efficiency.
Or, or a pothole in the park, right? It would seem fair to say, well, I saw a pothole in the park. I'm gonna make it a parks issue, but it's not the parks who are gonna take care of it. Public Works is the people who take care of potholes. So if you did that to parks, which is a very common thing, they have to re-categorize it to us, which just takes a little more time. They absolutely know what to do, but it just. It's, it's one more step, right? It just takes a little bit longer, um, and, and as far as getting the issue corrected, but, but it'll absolutely get to the right people. Um, because we will do, like you're saying, do you look at the data? We'll look at ones, hey, what hasn't been addressed this week? Okay, you know, that's our stuff and, and we go through them like that. Yeah. So we absolutely look at it and we do find all the stuff that, that maybe got overlooked or wasn't sure where to get categorized. Yeah.
I would also say in the case of like a blocked sidewalk or somebody parked in bike lane, you'd be better calling the non-emergency line because that would get, you get. Not immediate, but it would get a quicker response than submitting a tag, which may not get looked down to next day.
You mean the non-emergency please line or the non-emergency?
Okay.
So you can call them for ours blocking sidewalks, blocking bike lanes, and it will be more responsive.
Okay.
Than this because this, you know, you put in a parking non-emergency and it's usually for like a car being in the wrong setting two hours. So the night shift isn't missing like that. The day shift is, we're in terms of the parking enforcement. Now it's been a lot of hours, right? So if it's something you need sooner, you'd be better off calling the non-emergency line.
That, that's good advice. That gives me a couple of extra questions. Is there a target? Does Public Works have a targeted response time? And then.
We do depending on the, um, type of issue. Signals, twenty-four hours, illegal dumping. We try to get to it within the first day or two, but we said like three days. So potholes, depending on the severity, we try to get to it.
That's great.
Days, but, you know, so it all depends on the severity, right? If you tell us the signals are flash, we're gonna get out there as soon as we can. Tell us the street lights out, we're gonna prioritize it, but it's not gonna be an emergency. So, um, we do have, what we try to hit is standard response times and. Through this data and this engage SSF and C Click Fix, Alex gets weekly, monthly, quarterly, yearly reports to talk about those average response times and the cases closed. And our close percentage and our open percentage and how many days down longer, thirty days, how many are longer than ninety days. No, and so he's constantly using that data to improve our, uh, response.
Do you ever, I mean, you keep saying about the legal dumping and it's the biggest problem. Is it always the same spot? Is there any way the police can help you catch the people doing illegal dumping? So you don't have to keep going there or?
Great question. We're constantly trying to figure it out. It's, it's not always the same spot, but it's, it's areas that, that are hotspots, right? And, and, uh.
This sounds frustrating to me.
No, it's absolutely frustrating. Um, but you know, there, I mean, there's so much else that we could be doing than cleaning up dumping, but it's, it's, you know, when it's there, we gotta clean it up. So.
Yes, thank you.
And, and it's tough, you know, but yeah, uh, we're always trying to find better ways to, to deal with it, uh, but, uh, it's difficult.
Yeah, so please, if you have any support and find.
Uh, not that they don't give us support, but it's just difficult. It's difficult to, 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 it's, it's a difficult issue to solve for you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So I mean, a puddle you can maybe plan for, but that is.
Yeah.
Out of control, right?
Easier, uh, thing to fix than legal dumping for sure. Yeah.
What's the wackiest request you've ever gotten?
God. Um, yeah, I don't even know. Maybe we get some crazy stuff. Sometimes there is one in there for compliments.
Oh.
We have people that stuff for that one occasionally. We don't get many of those, but, but there is something in there for compliments. There's one in there for questions. That's where some of the weird stuff comes. But, uh. Yeah, there's a lot of strange stuff that comes through and it's just, sometimes it's difficult, right? Like sometimes it's sort of just a broken request and you can't really. Give a location, locations are on stuff like that. So sometimes I definitely say like parts of my job are part detective in order to solve some of this stuff. It's very difficult to sort of decipher some of it. So the more info you can put in a request. Locations, picture, you know, in description and exact location, it, it gets much easier for us. Some of them, like I said, super easy to identify pothole on this street, this, you know, westbound. Great. Some of them a little more difficult, you know? So, uh, the more, the more information you can put, the easier it gets for us and the faster we'll be able to get to it. Yeah.
So dumping is the, um, most prevalent?
Yeah.
What would you say the second most common that your customers?
I don't know. What do you think it is? I mean, we get a lot of like dumping shopping carts.
A lot of code enforcement.
Lot of code enforcement stuff.
So just to kind of put into perspective what Alex said, we get, I don't know, forty-five hundred requests a year. I think the code enforcement probably more. Sixty-five percent of those referred to collectives, illegal dumping, their fee, the shopping carts, pick up on average seven hundred shopping carts a year.
Seven hundred. Did you say seven hundred?
Two, hey.
And then that's just the ones that.
What do you do with them?
Do you return to Target?
Um, we are going to take orders to the courthouse.
Safety.
There's hard legal services. So sometimes we'll notice a business. We don't have a very strong shopping cart policy right now. Subject with work. Says about a lot of, uh.
Action.
Political support, right? Yes.
I just figured out my question. Um, so some of the comments that you said aren't really filtered through engages SSF are things that go through the traffic advisory. I forget the.
Traffic advisory.
Yeah.
Tac. Traffic advisory committee.
Committee?
Yep.
Or whatever the, the advisory committee like is. That's, that's what it's called.
Traffic advisory committee attack.
And then parking. Is there any way you could put on the website, if you have a, if you have like a suggestion for traffic, please submit it there instead of engage SSF? Cause I had the, I always had the impression that if like I had a suggestion like, oh, a curb, a lot of people keep illegally parking at this curb. Because it's unclear and the paints, like there's missing paint.
So. We're, we're trying to, to work on combining those a little bit, making them a little more intuitive. Um, when the city rolls out their new, uh. AI assistant on the website, think that that's gonna help a lot. You just be able to type in what you want to do and it'll push you where you need to go. But rest assured, if you're putting the engage SSF, this curb needs to be painted red for these reasons. We would get that in public works. We would submit a tac request on your behalf, let you know, that we would review it. It's not the easiest way to do it. Um, the best way to do it would be a tac request, but if it gets to us that way, we'll still submit it.
It worked though because the school across the street from me, their paint, their red paint was faded. I put in there, paint is faded. Someone came and painted it, so.
Yeah, there is a requi, or there is a category in engage for sidewalk curb and gutter that does catch a lot of the, the. Paint the curves, you know, sidewalk curb and gutter. People see curb and say, oh, the curb's not painted, so they'll put that in, which that'll get to the right people. Um, uh, but yeah. If you have, that's why I wanted to mention it. I didn't mean to open a whole nother sort of can of worms, but tac for suggestions, right, is, is. A better avenue than engage. Engage is for identifiable issues that we can repair, right? So if you're saying, hey, you know, I noticed that I rode through this intersection. And it was really dangerous and if we had this, it might have, it might be safer. That's not something that you'd want to put in engage. That's something that should go through tac, right? Um. It's, it's the proper avenue for that where it's gonna get the right people looking at it. Yeah.
So this is a site for new, not me, this is a site for maintenance, not new stuff. So on maintenance, you know, along our bankfront trail. Somebody some time ago had these mile markers every half mile. He might be familiar.
I know that guy. He has an excellent.
Put them in, they put in arrows, painted arrows on the pavement.
Yeah.
Which is about all faded out.
Yeah.
Could we get them repainted?
It is that.
I would like to say yes. I can look into it for you. Please do.
You have to make a request though. You're wrong.
Went to the wrong category, Frank.
Well, it is made because they were painted before. It was a repaint, so it's not a new.
Yeah.
So this is the right category.
I'll look into it.
Okay. Uh, any other comments from VPAC?
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Public comment? Are there any comments? No public comments. Okay, um, agenda item number three.
Yes, this is, uh, uh, east of one oh one transportation improvements and we have Matthew Rubel, our principal engineer here tonight.
Good afternoon, everyone. As I was already introduced, Matt Rubel, your principal engineer. I was asked to come and give an overview of some of our projects we have going on. So, um. This is something that engineering, we're hoping to come with you on a regular basis and regular intervals. A lot of different project managers come here, share different projects that are in design or in construction, get feedback and just kind of share what's going on. So I'm here tonight to share with you, um, our east of one oh one transportation improvement vision that the city's working on. And it's all kind of coming together in the guise of a, um, eastern neighborhoods CFD. So if I open a web browser. I would like to show you guys a website and then maybe we can have a conversation.
And do you wanna define what the CFD is?
I would. Um, so it's kind of two parts to this conversation. One is what's the vision for east of one oh one? And then secondly. What a CFD is and what that, you know, a way to potentially fund it. Uh, to quickly answer that, you know, that's a community facility district. It's a way for businesses to, uh, or property owners to tax themselves in order to bond against it, to build infrastructure. Um, and that's an item that'll be going for council next week on the eleventh. And so there'll be a conversation that the, uh, city council will be having. And with the, whether to put up ballots, I'm not really here to get into that because that's not really my role. I, it's kind of bum my head, but I am here to talk about the city's vision for the infrastructure. So if you click on this website, um, we were able to share kind of the location where we're talking about. It's kind of the east of one oh one. It's our business district. It's, you know. And trying to really address traffic congestion, safety, some of our aging infrastructure and really try to think about that last mile mode shift. Um, some of the things to consider is in our long-term growth for this area, the amount of population that's going to be commuting in and out of there every day is going to increase dramatically. And so we need to find a way to improve our infrastructure to account for that. And one of the key tenants of that is finding ways for people to commute that doesn't involve a personal automobile. Uh, there's still roads. We're still gonna have to allow that, but we want to make it more accessible for transit, bikes, uh, people to take the train in and then get to their work safely. Um, so some of the big visions out there that we're trying to identify, one is just the roadway rehabilitation. So the city's invested significant money into. Our roads, uh, about twenty-four million dollars recently in just west one oh one paving that you've seen in the last few years. Unfortunately, our, or fortunately, our west one oh one is starting to look really good. Our downtown has a certain code. You see some of the improvements. This part of our town just has a lot.
This part of our town just has a lot of needs that have not been addressed. So if the CFD were to go through, we'd be setting aside twenty to thirty million dollars to do a big catch up project over there. Uh, not really transit related, but it does affect you if you're on a cyclist and there's a pothole everywhere, whatever. So it does, it does really matter. Um, one of the other key tenants is transit facilities. We want to install, our vision is to have one point three miles of transit only lanes. So to really make it, uh, fast and efficient for buses to get in and out. Uh, twenty four bus stops will be upgraded and have accessible improvements made to them. And, um, so and real key improvements around the ferry and the Caltrain station. Once again, really trying to make those strong links to make that a more desirable way to, um, access east of one oh one. And then, uh, you know, really focusing on pedestrian, you know, whether you're just trying to walk across to a different campus. Or you wanna be able to walk from Caltrain or, uh, one of these other transit services. Um, updating, um, all the intersections and crosswalks. Bicycle facilities, uh, I'm not gonna read off the whole thing, but it is looking to add five point four miles of separated. Uh, bikeways and trails and, uh, really improve five potential connections across one oh one. To really make it, um, an accessible, safe area to bike. Um, this vision really, there's no reason why we shouldn't be doing this. It's flat. There's no reason why bikes aren't a very, uh, comfortable mode of transit out here.
They're crossing the highway, is it not flat?
That's a very good point. And that's a real challenge right now. There's not, there's not a comfortable way to cross the highway right now. With the exception of maybe the new Caltrain station, that tunnel, but the other ways are not comfortable. You can do it, but I I don't.
Set the report Boulevard, but it's dangerous.
And really narrow and dangerous, yes. So those are the goals, or those are kind of the city's long visions that were outlined in the general plan, the bike master plan. Um, here's kind of some of the land use out there. We don't really need to, uh, get too much into that. Here's some of the tax rates, which once again, that's not really my purview, but we have identified for, um, proposed projects. And I really invite you to go onto this website. It'll be in the meeting notes, dive in, read through it. It is some, uh, pretty interesting stuff. For each one of these identified improvements, we can have a little description, so, uh, some kind of record or magnitude costs that are associated with it. Um, and here's really what I want to discuss. What's the actual vision? So we actually hired an engineering transportation firm, Fanpeers, to help us identify. We said, hey, the city's got all these high level concepts, high level plans. What does that actually look like on paper? And how does that actually work? So we hired them to look through most of the corridors east of one oh one and come up with a corridor level study. Ten percent level plans, as you see the printout behind you, and we'll bring them up on the screen, to really identify, okay, how does that look in practice? Part of this is to help us more visually represent what are these improvements? To help share with folks, get feedback, see how they would fit. Two, uh, if the CFD were to pass, you know, could what are we actually building? You know, help us identify that. And then three, if the CFD doesn't pass, we still have a really good roadmap for what our vision is. And we'll look to, uh, the developers as they come on board and pay their fees to, um, build it in chunks. A- as the money comes in, as the market allows. Um, so one of the areas that I think it's worth pointing out, and, uh, keep in mind, these aren't fully designed. This is just kind of high level concepts, but you know, there, there's a lot of thought that did go into these, is for our new Caltrain station. You know, how do we get bikes, pets and transit in and out of this area? So one area you'll notice is in red is a bus only lanes. So one of the concepts that was to help transit. That I believe currently goes up Corporate Drive and then comes down, wraps around Paletti Way. It's a slow route to get to the Caltrain station. Would be to actually build them a dedicated off ramp here off of East Grand, just a little separate little road spur. And would make, uh, for a much more fa- um, a shorter time for them to get to Caltrain. Pick up people from the station to drop off and, you know, make a loop and get back out. Um, some of the other improvements are enhanced bike lanes. As you see, we have a class one separated bike facility. That would bring you from the Caltrain station, avoid a lot of this, uh, freeway on or at the off ramps and get you heading east. Or north depending on your direction. Uh, same, we have for the actual people who are gonna use these campuses, additional bike lanes here. Um, I don't know, you guys can see the map. I'm not gonna read through every little feature, but I'm really trying to show the infrastructure being designed. With these other modes as our primary concern and not just adding more capacity for automobiles. One of the other areas that's really, uh, definitely would like to bring into your attention is Oyster Point. So we will, uh, one of the biggest bottlenecks right now to buses coming to and from Oyster Point. Which is the, uh, one of our more heavily traveled, uh, areas is the buses are stuck in the same traffic as everyone else. So if we could find a way to create a bus only lane that would get them across Oyster Point. And get them, you know, on their own dedicated, uh, shared carpool lane onto the freeway. That makes the bus just a lot more attractive and businesses can help promote that use. Uh, we also wanna get bikes and pets across the freeway. Once again, going back to our crossing of the freeway is one of our major challenges. And so we have envisioned a separated, uh, shared use path along the northern edge of Oyster Point. That extends from east of, or sorry, west of one oh one, heading east.
Spoke to us about?
Uh, Lawrence was talking about the bike boulevards were, um, over on west of one oh one. They were like.
Yeah.
So would it be something similar to what he spoke to us about or?
Yes. No, no, please. Uh, if you have any questions on those things, I'm happy to share what I can.
I think I've written out a question.
Sorry.
I think you had a question.
Oh, I'm I'm struggling trying to try to picture that. That happens to be a very dangerous i- intersection for me. Right in my bicycle up Oyster Point and then coming up to the freeway is a double right onto the freeway. I had to make at the green light and got these frigging morons coming around. But the first one, the guy in the inside stopped for me. And then the next day coming around the backside, doesn't see me and I'm, I don't know anybody, don't get me started. I hate that intersection.
It's very.
Um, I I definitely agree with that. Um, so that is something we would hope to improve with the long term vision for Oyster Point. And so how exactly that gets done, with separate signal timing or how that would happen? I I've been, I don't know if it's been fully, um, explored here, but that's definitely something we'd wanna consider to make that a safe, comfortable connection.
Perhaps a push button for bicycles or pedestrians only and cars no right turn on red.
Would be quick, yeah.
There's not that many pedestrians or cyclists, but when they have them, it's. Dangerous.
Agreed.
Yeah, cause the second car turning right.
They don't really care. They're just trying to hurry on to the freeway, yeah. Um, and as you see, as we go through, we try to design intersections for, um. All users are protected intersections where we can, so, uh, they include bringing the bikes along in their separate, uh, traveled way. And really just catering the infrastructure. So you can in theory come all the way across and get to the end where Oyster Point, uh, is that Corporate Drive? Where we get you to the end and get you to Oyster Point and a safe bike lane and or a safe transit lane. Uh, unfortunately, there's not enough width to do a dedicated bus lane in both east and westbound directions here. You know, that is one of the compromises that we had to, um, wrestle with, but given the traffic patterns. This is what we're proposing would give the most relief to the afternoon traffic, uh, where the morning, uh, eastbound. I think can, um, the buses would be able to navigate the regular, uh, travel lane.
It's the PM traffic that's the tricky traffic?
That's the one that really drives it. I mean, morning can be.
Yeah.
Impactful, but, um, talking with the employers and looking at the traffic studies, that was identified as the bigger need. Now down on East Grand, where we have a little bit more space, we're proposing in both directions. And this is the one that would be tying indirectly to the Caltrain station. So, um, we definitely would look for opportunities to, uh, do that here. And same with the separated, uh, bike paths. Um, believe in this one, looks like we have a, uh, one on each side of the road. Um, and so a lot of the things that we were trying to work through is when's it appropriate to have a shared use path? Where we have a path just on one side of of the roadway where bikes are going in both ways? And where does it make, uh, more sense to actually separate them and have them on either side of the roadway? And that was made paying on driveway access, where they'd be going, or they're heading north, south, uh, and things of that nature. Um, so as you can see, we have them for each corridor here. It's really a, a lot of work went into this. Uh, I definitely encourage you guys to look through this at your own pace. If you have any questions, comments, you know, these aren't fully baked designs. But it is kind of the vision. Uh, we definitely would love to hear that. Uh, specific outreach and specific design would have to be done when we actually go to build one of these corridors. Uh, so it's not, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace, but it definitely, uh, you know, we're always looking to, uh, hear improvements. And I'll just share the one project, which is seems a little pie in the sky, but if it could ever be built, it would be, um, I just think incredible. Is a bike trail connection. Is that the best crossing? Anyways, that's good with the intent of tying into the Bay Trail on the Bayside and crossing one oh one. Tying in, crossing our grade set that would be built on Linden and getting over to the San Bruno Bart Station and Centennial Trail. Um, if that can be done, east one oh one has easier access on a bike to Bart or to our downtown Centennial Trail. Which has access to the rest of our city, um, and potentially can be a very comfortable, uh, bike route. And that could, uh, really just open up all transit.
Yeah, that's a huge original transit line, right? The Bart, I mean, everybody can come in to now the corporate center from, from Bart on on a safe path. Which is a huge deal, I think.
And just or even cities, um, uh, residents who just want a recreational ride on the Bay Trail. Right now, you're you're loading your car into a bike a lot of times, right? Driving out to the Bay Trail somewhere, get unloading your bike. And you know, it's great. You get exercise, get some sunshine, but how great would it be to have a comfortable?
I mean, or you're risking it on Airport Boulevard, pretty much.
Yeah, and there's a lot of people who do that ride. There's a lot of people who refuse to ride where it's un- feels uncomfortable, right? Feels unsafe. And so you're loading your bike in your car to go to a, you know, place to cycle as opposed to getting there, so. Anyways, so lo- lots of visions for all of east one oh one. Um, happy to answer any questions. I would go to a specific location. There's just a lot of sheets to kind of cut through.
There's also ones printed out if you wanna flip through them, if you wanna see closer.
Cause that's actually, I know it's kind of far to see, uh, sometimes, uh, it's great to be able to actually look at a piece of paper.
Is that last one reflected in your overall diagram? Cause I saw, I saw some i- in the, in the kind of high level diagram. There's not a lot of detail given around the, the crossings, especially in the Coma Creek area. I mean, I guess it's, you, you were saying it's not committed to this would happen yet. Is that maybe why?
Yeah, so this website is really, was set up and was communicated to try to help, um, promote the idea of the CFD. To for having, um, property owners tax themselves to build these. So a lot of the improvements are, um, are the visuals are really trying to talk about that. Where here, I think it's this green line would represent that concept.
Um, Coma Creek would be just slightly above, it would be two lines up.
Pardon me.
Yep.
And that would be. This would be the Coma Creek connection. So that would be a crossing at the, um, Airport Boulevard down here. Utah Avenue of a crossing.
Yeah.
Or down here was that bridge I was contemplating.
Oh, down to Shaw.
Down to Shaw Road.
Okay.
And over to the, um.
Uh, down, down more near San Bruno. I noticed there's a, there's a, you know, two up near Coma Creek. There's a proposed extension to the trail too. It looks like it travels along Coma Creek. And, um, I mean, at that point, it's, it's, it's getting pretty close to be able to tie into, to the Centennial Trail itself, which is somewhere along Coma Creek. Um, so that's maybe another place to consider. Um, I I know it's, it's further north, but there's a, yeah, I mean, that's getting really close to Centennial Trail up there. From an east-west perspective.
Yeah, Centennial Trail kind of runs, you know, kind of off the page here right now, but yeah, Coma Creek comes down here around, uh.
Yeah.
So, so yeah.
Yeah, there's been another project, I think, to extend, discuss extension of that hill along Coma Creek as well. And so maybe there's room for tie in somehow, yeah, it'd be interesting.
Yeah, and a lot of that visioning, uh, we're gonna be able to do with a grant that the San Antonio County ETA got for reconnecting communities.
Yeah, yeah. It was presented here, I think.
We should probably have more. It's a little bit on height, not height, it's a little bit. But it didn't go away. It didn't go away, but it.
So the total grant amount got cut in half. So there was originally three agencies in the state that, uh, won the grant. We won it as, uh, as a combined TA, City of South San Francisco and One Shoreline for the urban, uh, grant. And there was a border grant and a city grant down south that got it as well for a combined total of a hundred fifty million dollars. They did, they did not say how that money was gonna be split. Third, third, or that was gonna be worked through, uh, with the revised state budget. That a hundred fifty million got reduced to seventy five million dollars. Um, and now we've sort of been indicated that each project will receive about a third. You know, they're just gonna say, okay, we're probably gonna get about twenty five million dollars. So now we're working very closely with the TA and One Shoreline to say, what do we do with this twenty five million dollars? Do we do a bunch of visioning studies and try to continue advancing, uh, these plans? And go after larger federal dollars, the federal reconnecting communities? Or do we set aside, you know, a good chunk of that and try to actually build, um, improvements right now? Uh, kind of what's that balance of going after larger money versus, you know, taking what you got and actually building infrastructure? Yeah, I think it's kind of a combination of the two, you know, I would hate for all that money to be spent. We don't have actual, you know, much infrastructure to point to, is kind of my fear. But that's looking to address Alcamino Real, um, the barriers to transit is Alcamino Real, Coma Creek. I think Caltrain and one oh one are the four barriers, and so it's trying to address those crossings.
So I think it'll likely be, we will probably be back here with more ideas, information, projects in the next couple of years.
And we're particularly, um, excited for a chance to re-mention Alcamino as part of that. Especially looking closely at the TA, but.
I have specific questions. I have really big picture question. I know you're in engineering, so I don't, I don't know if you can answer the big picture question. Maybe that's a separate presentation. For this intersection, I was wondering who manages the street near. Is it the city that does the street near Caltrain?
Paletti Way.
Is the city street or is it Kaptus Caltrain manager?
So, uh, don't put a crack me. It was a private road that was being dead, is being dedicated to the city. And I believe that's went fully through now, but I, it has not gone fully through. So it's in transition as I, so it was a privately maintained road that the city is going to absorb and start maintaining.
Okay. Yeah, yesterday I was, this is super anecdotal, but yesterday I was picking someone up and I, we like, we got really lost. Because it's not super clear where you can pick someone, but that.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's not, that not the city. Um, then my bigger comment is this, this is great. I love, like, there's so much space east of one oh one. And I think this vision overall at a very high level is really good. But I've been, I've been pretty vocal over the last couple of years about like the roadway expansions, the Utah overpass. I think there was a proposal, I don't see the line on the map anymore, on North Point, is it North Point? No, North Access Road, sorry, North Access Road. Um, and I think there's a lot of confusion from residents about like, what? What is this, what is staff pushing for? What are the businesses pushing for? I know city council was supposed to hear on this CFD last meeting. I think they're gonna present at the next meeting, which I'm, I'm probably gonna at least watch from home. Like, how, how can, how can residents like learn more about like what the city is thinking about? It sounds like there's a different push and pull levers that have been, that are influencing what happens east of one oh one. And residents just feel really lost, like where, where do we come in? And I think that's a, that's a big, that's a policy debate. So maybe that's like, maybe that's someone who's much higher. Maybe the city manager, city council or someone like, who can, who can help like connect residents to east one oh one? Cause I think a lot of residents are, feel very disconnected from east one oh one. What's happening?
Yeah, so I, I, I think those are some really, um, good observations. As a resident of west of one oh one most of my life, why would you ever drive east one oh one, right? Unless you're kind of going to a handful of locations, I think, uh, just anecdotally, when I talk to people, I say, encourage them, drive down North Point. You, you, if you haven't done it in the last five, ten years, just do it. You know, spend fifteen minutes, you'll be blown away with just what, how much it's changed. Um, before any of these projects were to actually go forward, there would have to be a, uh, public engagement. There would be a process by which, uh, we would have to sell the vision, right, of showing what the project is and receiving input. Um, so far, all the work to date is really piggybacking off of a lot of the planning documents that have been done recently, specifically the general plan. And the bike master plan, so really looking at those as that large, um, engagement with the community. And so this is like, okay, where is that, uh, showing us? But if it actually moves forward and gets funded, that's where a more specific project. But if it actually moves forward and gets funded, that's where a more specific project engagement will take place.
Okay. Another follow-up, I guess a follow-up question, like the CFD being presented to city council at the next meeting, whatever that is. It was very noticeable that Utah Avenue, Utah Avenue overpass that I've been vocally opposing, that's an expensive roadway expansion, was off the list. So is that still the city's priorities? And would the city still seek funding to try to fund something as big as the Utah overpass? As a priority? Or would it, or would it just say, okay, as a policy, it's important that we, rather than investing on this roadway expansion, it's important that we make sure we install the bike lanes and the transit lanes first and the pedestrian improvements first before we allow more cars to come east of 101.
So I think there's, one of the key parts of the CFD, or why it's attractive to the property owners out there, is they want improvements that can be built relatively quick and for a finite amount of money. So if you only have 150 million, I believe it's 150 to 180 million is kind of what they're targeting. What's the best way to spend that? And the consensus is, we should do bike lane improvements and kind of everything I just showed you there. That's the priority, because that can be delivered in, you know, a handful of years. And that should be done first. The long range Utah overpassing project is not funded. You know, it's still in design right now. So that's still a, identified as a long-term goal for the city. Cause it has other benefits that we need, but that's not what the CFD is looking to fund. There's only 150 million dollars and that would all be absorbed by the Utah overpassing project.
Yeah. So it sounds like the city is still pushing big infrastructure, big roadway expansion projects like Utah, but it's not the first priority, because it's less cost effective, because it's more expensive.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if we consider the Utah crossing a big roadway expansion project. I think it's making just a connection over the freeway. I think we're talking about a mile of new pavement in total. And so really what we're trying to do is connect our east of 101 and our west of 101 neighborhoods. When Lindenville gets reimagined as part of the study, there's not enough connection points to get across. So we need to accommodate all modes of transit, you know, for automobiles, bikes, beds, and the different users of those. So it's really more of a connection than adding capacity. I think we've discussed before in our presentations that it's not really a capacity increasing project based on the traffic studies. What it is, is it's just providing another connection.
What's the timeframe for the transit bike improvements? Yeah, compared, like compared to the more expensive roadway projects?
So it really comes down to funding. So if the CFD does not pass and kind of going on, the city currently delivers infrastructure, most of those improvements have been conditioned to a nearby development. So as that development comes online and pulls building permits, they're responsible for building that infrastructure around their development to help, you know, offset their impact. And then as they start paying their transportation impact fees, we're able to then program the remaining portions to have like a complete link or a complete area. So it's really development timed. So if development starts picking up, those will start having a lot faster. If development stays paused as it is now, those are going to go at a much slower pace. If the CFD passes, you know, I, I think about a five-year window is side of what was been talked internally, but we don't have a, I don't have a specific schedule, because there's a lot of influx, but it would happen a lot faster.
Sorry.
That's it?
And I think that's just kind of going back to, I think that's one of the hopes of, of the CFD we're to pass, is we can then hire up staff or hire up consultants and actually start delivering these projects, you know, kind of as fast as the wheels of construction and government can work. So that's something that, you know, it's, it's really more of a timing issue than what the end product is.
And if, so if the CFD is approved and moves forward, I'm just wanting to, you know, kind of reiterate that the development projects that may be on pause now maybe will be coming online, hopefully. And they will still be paying their tip fees. So there will be additional funding available as well.
Yeah, so those traffic impact fees aren't addition to.
Yeah, it's not like the, the CFD would not take the place of those tip fees.
It's, we're additive.
Yeah.
The, the developer are responsible for offsite improvements that they're triggering. They're also responsible for impact fees. And then, you know, if they were to choose to sell, tax themselves to pay into a CFD. The needs are great, you know, even with all these, we probably don't have enough money to do the full vision. So it's really looking at every viable source. And that would also include outside grants and, you know, other funding mechanisms we get from the state or federal government. Do you think there's much support for the CFD? I have no idea, to be honest with you. I, I helped out with the, with kind of the transportation visioning and some of this. I am not part of those phone calls. I would imagine if they're bringing it to council, they have a sense that there is support. But once again, I'm not.
Is it just businesses that are voting to be taxed on this?
Landowners. So it's the property owners, East 101. Because there's not, I forget the exact number, but since there's no residents that live over there or under like 10 residents that live under there, it's a property vote. So property owners will vote. If it was a populated center like West 101, it would go to the, the population of the voters. So it's a very different dynamic in that case.
Okay.
So they would not be South City residents?
Or the property owners? Yeah, probably a lot of them are not. I would imagine they're large corporations.
Not my neighbors, though.
Or, you know, real estate trusts or, you know, people who own land out there. And that's why they have to see the benefit of it. You know, their property value would have to, you know, increase or their tenants want to, would want to keep renting their spaces there, because they can.
Like, I know leaseability, when we talk to developers, like, they really want us to see these things so they can lease their new, you know, fancy new office R and D buildings. So.
Wouldn't many of these buildings have transportation demand management plans that they need to meet?
Which they will help them.
That would really help them meet that, because they may not have enough parking for their, all their employees.
One of the.
They should not have enough parking for their employees.
Well, one of the tensions is the different type of land users. So office biotech, probably see a lot of value in getting their workers, I know. More the industrial users of it, who are trying to bring in their 18-wheel semis in to, you know, move goods around. Maybe a bike lane isn't as attractive to them. You know, so there's different users of the roadway network. And that's actually just from an engineering standpoint, when we actually go to design a roadway, is one of the tensions that we kind of, or one of the bigger challenges is how do I install a brand-new bike lane or these brand-new protected intersections? When I got a very large trucks that I have to accommodate them truck turns, because it's a legacy business, you know, it's just continuing to operate. And so how do those work? Eventually, if those industrial uses get bought out and start becoming office, then it all, it's easier to design the infrastructure. But when we have different users of the same roadway, that's a challenge.
Heck, every time I go to dump in my car, I'm a little nervous, okay? And I'm not in on bike, so I don't know how you're going to manage that. It'll be fun.
Yeah, no, it's a great vision. I actually, I think the city's done a lot of great work in the last few years with the general plan and kind of culminating a lot of these drawings. I think the vision's really good. Just a matter of can we deliver it?
All right, any other comments from?
Good job.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's, please see, you know, for yourself, it's, it's a great website. You know, we're trying to be as transparent as we can about what the, the ideas are, what the vision is. If you have comments, feedback, we're always looking to hear it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, agenda item four.
Yes, our agenda item four is BPAC's letter of support for improvements at schools. So, I guess I'll go, if you have anything to add. We, Daryl signed a letter as the chair of BPAC in support of improvements at four schools in South San Francisco. So it's Altaloma Middle, Berry Berry Elementary, Parkway Heights Middle, and Ponderosa Elementary. So this letter is going to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, requesting grant funds for, for these improvements. Mostly, obviously pedestrian, well, maybe not obviously, but pedestrian and bicycle improvements around these, these schools. Do you want to add anything?
I can, you know, I'm saying, I'm happy to answer any questions on this. So five of our schools recently performed state process school audits, where we work with San Mateo County Office of Education, the municipal district, the local schools, engineering staff, et cetera. And they do an op, identifying a bunch of improvements that they want. And now is our next step, is to take those improvements and try to get them funded. So the San Mateo County TA right now has a call for bike bed projects. So we're looking to maximize the amount of money we can apply for. So we're applying for the maximum of $5 million, which would include $2 million for a combination of Berry Berry, Altaloma, because those schools are right next to each other and they're offsite, we'd all kind of work together. We applied for $2 million from Parkway Middle School, because that has a lot of improvements that were identified. And we identified $1 million around Ponderosa Elementary School. The really, the values, the actual expenditure costs is probably more than the grants, but we're just looking to maximize what we can get at this time. Yeah. Saying appreciate the, on a very short notice, the letter of support for these. Cause it does help make our grants more competitive.
And the letter's included in the packet, is that right, Kelsey? Yeah, so if you want to take a look at it, it's included in the packet, yes.
I saw some of the pictures from where, and through Parkway, and it was beautiful with the purple paw prints and the.
The quick build turned out really fun there, yeah.
So will that help with the grant or?
I think so. So one of the parts is, we're, we're kind of playing by their playbook. It's, you do these visioning studies. We had a separate grant to help us do quick build, these kind of demonstrations to never reveal excitement and kind of community engagement. But it also helps us receive feedback on, well, do you like this? Do you not like this? Is there a challenge with it? Especially if we try new or a different configuration of the runway. And then lastly, hopefully we get the funding to actually do the hard improvements of the actual concrete and pavement.
It seemed like a lot of improvements are needed, so.
Another one that was, we did a similar pattern was for Martin Elementary. In the town, we did, there was a state process audit, we did a quick build. And that was a really cool, we did a whole painted intersection. And now we secured $3 million in grant funding for that. And we're in the design process for.
So the other schools are just a little behind Martin?
Yeah, the Martin one, we were able to, given its location in the city, it was very competitive for certain grants. So we, I think that one was first, but.
Is there anything else that you need from BPAC in terms of like grant applications or this specific one? No, nothing?
No, no, we just wanted, I mean, Matt, unless there's anything you need. We just wanted to let y'all know that you had been in support of this via Daryl's signature.
I signed it so fast, I didn't realize. The BPAC support, we didn't officially vote, but.
And we can report back, obviously, if we receive the grants. Good news about it, we'll bring it back.
The grant was submitted on Friday.
We go, nice, awesome.
Okay. I guess there's probably comments from the public on number four, so we'll go to number five.
That's right. So this item is review and discussion of the BPAC presentation to city council on September 25. I am presenting this item, so I will continue. So we had, we had mentioned this during our last BPAC meeting, that the city council has asked each of the boards and commissions to provide a very brief, I think it's.
Thank you.
See you later, Matt. Bye. To provide a five-minute presentation to the council about what, what, what your mission is and what you focus on. So in, in our planning division, we're coordinating the planning commission's presentation as well as BPAC's presentation. And so Adina, Kelsey and I put together some slides. Daryl and Dylan will be presenting the slides. And so if I may, it sounded like Daryl and Dylan had an interest in talking about goals of the BPAC and of the, sort of the vision of the BPAC. And so we. So we wanted to bring it, bring it to discussion for the full committee so that when Daryl and Dylan spoke to the council and said, this is BPAC's goals, that it was representative of the, of the full committee. So I think it worked out quite well, I think, timing-wise as well. So what I thought I might do is briefly walk through the slides. If I may walk through the whole presentation, just so that you can see, it's, it's not, it's not very long. It's 11 slides. And then can have a conversation about, about it. One thing I wanted to note, which you'll see on this slide, is we were going to share this during the staff report, but I wanted to share it now, is that we have exciting news. We have a new BPAC member. So his name is Carlos Moreno. And he, he is a South City resident and works for the Peninsula Water.
Clean Energy.
Cleaner, thank you. Peninsula Clean Energy. He was actually one of the presenters at the Silicon Valley Bike Summit last week, which I was also going to update during staff, so I'm like giving away all my, all my, all my, all my hot updates here. But yeah, so it's very exciting. So he still needs to get sworn in to do the oath with the city clerk's office. And he actually was out of town tonight, so wasn't able to join us today. But hopefully we'll be at our next meeting. And so that's why you see his name on, on the slide. So you have a new committee member. So just to walk through these.
We'll go back on the winner. When were we getting our last member?
Update this.
When council appoints them. So are you interviewing?
It's not, is it city clerk that takes it to city council? They just did it on the 27th and 40th, the one. There's quite a few on the list and just one made it past.
Is it saved to the network? Like, did you open it up from the network?
Yes, I've opened it up from the.
Okay, because I just, I just made an edit. And so I was like, if I save it, will it reflect the edit?
Put that on your calendar.
No, okay. Okay.
But it went off.
Okay, great.
Put it on your calendar.
Oh, this one, yeah.
Yeah, the 25th? And then for some reason this date, we could, I mean, it's, we've got it in the system as this date, but you can let us know. Yeah. Okay, so you have your cover slide. And then an introductory slide to say that BPAC is an advisory body to the city council, established in 2019, seven members, and that you meet on the first Wednesday.
Excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
2019?
Yes, that's, I asked the city clerk and they said that BPAC was officially formally established in 2019.
Been running for a long time. Maybe there was a change. I think the problem was, was when I was, I was on from 2017 or 18. And I think at some point in time, they started paying us, but back then it was, it was no. But maybe that was a change. But otherwise, they've had BPAC for 30, 40 years.
Was it more, I was gonna, I, yeah, it must've been more informal, but I think it may have been, like, there's one thing that we're going to pull up in a bit, is that the municipal code establishes the, or what consolidates, establishes the BPAC at some degree that was incorporated.
I thought at the time we were a committee and then I thought we were changed to a commission, but I'm just noticing, we're still a committee. But that, that might've been the difference, is change in technicality to make us a commission versus a committee. But we still call ourselves a committee, so I don't understand.
We can look into that. Yeah.
We want to just question that again.
You guys are definitely still a committee, because there's no public hearing items ever presented. So that would make it a commission.
Got you. I thought it was different than getting, getting reimbursed or getting some money.
Everyone gets paid on the board. Our design review board does as well.
Yeah. Or as I say, it was sometime after, after 2018, that we actually started getting paid. Before that, we weren't.
Volunteering.
Yeah, well.
So formally.
I was passionate about the issue, that's why I wanted to be on it.
Yeah, so I guess that's why she put formally, right? Where it was not formal.
That would make sense if you were starting to pay not too long ago.
Still not wearing long pants.
I was NPS.
Make a jacket next time, Frank.
And we have our committee members and staff. This is the mission per the, per our municipal code, which is the fundamental responsibility of the BPAC shall be to advise and make recommendations to the city council on limitless policy programming, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then roles and responsibilities. And we can pull up after we go through the presentation, we can show you in the municipal code. But help create multimodal transportation options that enable safe access for people of all ages and abilities. Recommend bicycle and pedestrian projects for grant opportunities. Participate in the development review of plans, bike and ped plans, policies and regulations. Then review the city's existing and future bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Then review the city's existing and future bicycle and pedestrian facilities and make recommendations on improvements. Review development project applications of the discretion of the council. Promote bicycle and pedestrian safety and awareness through education outreach and promote the usage of bicycle and pedestrian mobility. And without, we'd have a slide where you could talk about Active South City and that it was adopted in twenty twenty-two and that this is really the roadmap for bicycle and pedestrian improvements throughout the city. And then here's a network map of the bikeways. And a network map of the pedestrian spot, spot improvement locations and focus areas.
So you're wanting them to say the committee did give input?
I think so, I think that.
The committee did give input, but I don't think you gentlemen were here at that time.
I came for the very end of it.
Okay.
So they can represent.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, and now, I mean, it's, they're, they're not representing themselves, they're representing B-PAC. So that would be absolutely appropriate.
And I would say that this is more about the implementation of this now rather than the creation of the document. That, that this really, like Matt was talking about, the CFD improvements, those are really based on the recommendations that come from this plan. So a lot of the work that we're doing now as the committee and as staff are based, this, this is the foundational work that we're then springing forth from is, I think, our thought about it. Is it, yeah, more reflective of the implementation work that's going on now than the creation of the plan itself, say. And then other example efforts, and we can update this. But I was hot off the last meeting and so that's what, we had key stakeholder for Active South City and other plans providing guidance on bicycle and pedestrian projects like the bike lanes for boulevards and then receiving quarterly reports on collision data from the police department. And then our final slide is a plug to join B-PAC. The end. So this is eleven slides and you have five minutes, so that's about twenty-five seconds a slide. So we can cut things down. I know y'all had an interest too in discussing goals. So we can see how that, how that feeds in. But yes, the direction from, is it, is it the council, the dean or the City Clerk's office, this five minutes?
City manager's office. I mean, they're not going to like pull you off at the hook. But I think it's just in recognition that like council meeting is going to be really long, so just trying to like, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we can get through these pretty, pretty quick. It's a whole lot of content.
I, I mean, if you go a little over, it's totally fine.
Will they ask questions? I mean.
They may. Yeah, there may be questions and there could be questions for B-PAC members or for staff.
Yeah.
One thing I was, I was wondering if we could do for these slides is that, right now, a lot of the content is just derived from the code itself.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's not probably something that's super new to council members, although we could definitely go through it. But is there anything that we can add that kind of does more to play, to, to present information that's kind of placed in, in this context of this group, these people here and the time that it's taking place? Because other than the reference to Active South City, it's all just derived from code basically. And so I don't know, maybe something like for the B-PAC members, what are, what are the current priorities people are interested in focusing on?
Yeah.
Because I mean, the responsibilities are all pretty broad, actually. I don't know if we want to like, you know, list, list the top, top priority for each person on the B-PAC or if we all agree on some things to list. But something like that would be nice, I think.
I, I would recommend if you can have a few bullet points that are like, that the group comes to together versus listing kind of people just because it is like.
Yeah.
And we have a new person coming and we don't know what hit, you know what I mean? So I think that would be great, be really a good, a good idea. Would be more interesting than.
Chris volunteered us, like I got to do the safe routes to school and the bicycle, every kid deserves a bicycle. I, I know you guys, Chris has volunteered you guys for things too, right? And so then we get an interest in it. It's right. It's like, those are important to me, that every kid gets a bike and the they run us to school because like it's one of the. I don't know that, I mean, your daughter is small, right?
Oh, yeah, she's sixteen months.
Yeah, why don't we just list?
Yeah, I think it would be.
But you know what I mean, you're not, are my priorities, aren't your priorities?
Yeah, sure.
I was thinking I could just take notes as you talk, so this doesn't have to be like formally polished first bat, first, first go. But is there something that, that comes to mind? So you had mentioned.
But I think we all want to, we all want.
Yeah, that's a currently active project, right, that I think we're, we're engaging on a lot.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we've never, as long as I've been on B-PAC, we've never sat and said, what are our priorities? We've kind of just taken it top, topic by topic. So this is good that we have this opportunity.
I would say, I actually think that would be a great, I mean, I, I.
Future agenda.
Let's have that be a full agenda. I mean, let's do this conversation so we can kind of get this. But I would love to just like put that on the agenda and spend, have that be the B-PAC's agenda. Especially when we get our new member and hopefully another new member. I think that'd be great.
Well, I mean, we all want to help you guys do your job.
Right, that's why I wanted, like, let's just talk about like, you know, so yes, we will, Megan is writing it down to do.
We do have our own things that are close to our heart.
And that's, and that's why you're on the committee. So that's great too, so.
Does anything else come to mind?
Yes, crossing one oh one with a bicycle.
You are so brave. And you are also so brave.
Yeah, me not anymore.
But my, my own, my own like, that issue definitely. Trail connectivity. I guess Centennial Bay trailer is an example, but yeah, bike and ped trail connectivity is a different.
It's Centennial, we go, is that right? Yeah.
Yeah. I don't weigh as in.
It actually is.
Is it really?
Yeah, that's its formal name is Centennial Trail. The only reason I know that is because I worked on that Centennial Way Trail Master Plan, which is like quite an awful.
We're very formal here, so.
Yeah, I don't know why, it's like.
Trail connectivity to the trails?
Or within.
Uh, trails connecting to each other.
Trails connecting to one another. I can, I can word this a little bit to make it smoother, but.
My biggest priority on this committee has been number one, stopping roadway expansions and then figuring out how the city can shift more funding to transit and biking like this diagram shows.
Prioritizing.
I'd say focus, focus, focus on prioritizing funding.
I used it answering, yeah.
I'm putting it on the notice, there was, I talked a few years ago about us putting in some sort of a rail system from the Caltrain station out for the industrial area, like a sky rail.
Oh, what was it called? Oh my gosh, I always forget what it's called. The Glide Ways.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, that went away.
They went away.
Yeah, there just wasn't, it, it wasn't feasible financially or physically in the, in the, with the with the right of way that was available. I mean.
So it sounded like it was going to be very expensive.
Very expensive.
It's like our ferry.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking about that and watched the boat commute. Forty people get on it, then taken off. And I said, that's an awful expensive frigging boat ride.
It's like a cruise.
Fourteen people.
Where does it go? Where does it go?
Well, goes across the, I don't have a read. Exactly London Square. I think it's back, it's about two or three times a day.
It doesn't go to San Francisco.
No.
Well, I mean.
Peace pay. But it's, it's, it's an expensive, huge, have you been out there, right? You seen the?
I've seen it, but.
The, the dock building locked up all day. It's open in the morning and the evening.
If you want to see anything about, I mean, all the. I'm trying to like, I'm into the bikes for kids.
Yes. Yeah, everything deserves a bike, yeah. Support for every.
One thing I've heard a lot of us asking about too is that Active South City comes up a lot, right? But, but I think we don't have a lot of data on our progress or tracking, like what's really going on. And so I think, I don't know how to summarize that, maybe, yeah, extract some active South City progress. I think we still, we still don't have a good view of where we're at and, you know, what things maybe were, were skipped when a, when an area was, was redone or what things did make it. But I think this group does seem to have a lot of interest in, in following up on it, right?
Yeah, I'd like to hear what happened. You know, Chris did that demonstration project on El Camino. Is that going to go forward now or?
It is not.
It was always a demonstration.
Yeah. Yeah.
But that would have been so amazing.
Making El Camino safe.
I would say though, that, that type of improvement would be, would be, not knowing the super details of that since I wasn't here. But considering bicycle dedicated bike lanes on El Camino Real would be considered as a part of the reconnecting communities.
Yeah, absolutely.
When we went to the Silicon, Daryl was there as well, when we went to the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition Summit on Thursday that was held at the LPR here in South City, that was a huge focus. And that's the focus of the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition is improvements along El Camino Real. And so they highlighted a lot of work that Palo Alto and Mountain View have been doing to their portions and of, of the ECR. And so I think there's energy. I mean, there's been talk about it for a long time, but like perhaps more energy these days, so.
I think the businesses that lost the parking on the street killed it.
Yeah.
And that was only at one side, but they killed the whole thing then.
There was a lot of comments. We received many, many comments about it. There were a fair amount of negative comments.
I bet a lot of the parking for the demonstration.
Yeah.
A lot.
Okay.
From the same people, every day.
Any other priorities are there? Go ahead.
Sorry, were you going to continue the conversation about El Camino?
No, no, I was wondering if there were.
Vision, vision symbol.
Yeah.
I think your slide on accomplishments kind of relates because there was a bullet point about getting police reports on visions of enforcement and incidents. I think, I think those go hand in hand. I've been really, I've been really proud of this B-PAC for being able to push that.
Are there certain priorities that y'all, that you feel like rise to, rise to the top? So that are like priorities of the priorities?
Well, I think you can combine bullet points two and three. They're both, the, the theme of bullet points two and three is connections. So we could just say bicycle connections across the freeways and connecting the trails. And then you can combine the schools one because they're highly correlated. They're both programming infrastructure around school.
But she asked which ones were the priority of the priorities, right?
Are we voting?
No, I just didn't know if like you felt very strongly about implementation of the business zero policies. If, if there's not a clear.
It's okay, yeah. You may want to, I don't know. I mean, it is your opportunity to kind of pitch to council a little bit too about what you want funding for or that type of thing.
As the chair and speaker, I would, yeah, definitely put that one at the top.
I mean, but they're all, you can also state these are all important, like they're, you know.
What about that? Is that kind of?
Yeah, and we're kind of like, I mean, so the policeman comes and talks to us every quarter and tells us where the accidents are and what's happening. So then when someone else comes and tells us about a plan, we can say, oh, but we heard there were a ton of accidents. So I don't know how you put that into words that we, we kind of try to.
I think you could say focus, I mean, implementation, I, I think that's implementation of vision, vision zero.
Okay.
Like it's safety, right? Like that's what it boils down to. The policeman comes and tells us where the problems are. Then we are, you know, Matt comes and talks about potential solutions so you can help with those connections. And say, like, for example, you mentioned, you kind of said, that intersection is incredibly dangerous with the double right-hand currents. I mean, that's kind of exactly that. Yeah, that's exactly the focus on safety that, you know, we're looking for.
Okay, so we've covered that.
I think so. Yeah, I think that's in the vision zero, I feel like.
Yes. Is this?
It's hard to explain all that in five minutes.
I think we could, I mean, I think to Dylan's point, we could uh, yeah, do away with these two slides. I think we could also do away with these slides. When we put these slide deck together, we weren't totally sure what the B-PAC wanted to present.
Yeah.
So.
I think graphics are nice though. Like it just isn't, you know, yeah, it's nice to have some graphics.
Yeah, we could, we could flash it.
You know.
You could have.
People remind people that there is a plan out there that you're working on implementing. Yeah, I think we could pull the roles, we could.
I mean, you could even just have these five slides for however many.
Yeah.
Although I like your point, Adina, about the graphics, not to kick the graphics to the end.
Can we, well, I don't actually, five and six. I was going to suggest put six before five. Like, here's what we've done, here's what we're looking at doing.
One thought, and, and y'all can, since you're the presenters, it's to like lead with the most important thing. So like the thought about in staff reports, you put the recommendation at the top to say like, this is B-PAC, these are our priorities. Yeah, so that you, you have their attention at the very beginning and you come out instead of like talking through stuff that to your point, you had said maybe they already know. But like just really being like, we're B-PAC, this is our priority. I think can, can be very powerful, but this is also your presentation and you can.
Yeah.
Because it does flow more, I understand, saying like, this is what we work on, but these are our priorities.
Oh, I see what you mean.
I like saying though that these are our priorities and then you can talk about, these are the types of projects we work on. Because they're implementing these priorities.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, the council interviewed us, so they reviewed all those roles and responsibilities with us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe the other people tried the meeting more, but.
Can we email?
It'll be on, it'll be televised and it is a night.
So maybe.
We have our email, like could we?
If you're trying to.
I don't need to.
Maybe now, maybe when we self.
Get them excited.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I won't, not pull your email during the meeting.
But you remember that your audience, the council members, Mark, the guy, a bicycle rider.
Yeah, he is.
Oh, yeah.
He lives in the Westboro area.
Yeah.
So what project can we find for bicycles in the Westboro area?
One across two eighty.
Across two eighty, that people.
But he came, one thing on his bicycle, he, he came to the demonstration.
Electric bicycle. He's an easier driver over those hills than I have because he's got electric bike. But we never took a stand on that, did we? Take a vote on that?
Which?
Other than the Westboro connection, Westboro two eighty.
No, it kind of just went through really fast. Yeah, went through City Council, boom, and it was funded.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on the presentations? Is this, so here's, here's where we are right now, again, intro. Committee members, mission, priorities. So this would be, I would presume where you would spend most of your time. These are the I'm seeing, should we say like priority implementation, like anyway, sample effort.
Recent.
Right, recent efforts, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah.
And then implementation of the plan.
So, okay, so talk about implementation.
I think so, you could say like another focus of ours is really implementing the recommendations in the plan and.
And Dylan, I mean, this is where you can talk about it and, and tracking what has been.
I, I think we just pull this up for, for reference and maybe spend a few, just a few seconds and, and get tie back into the fact that we're tracking this. Here's some detail on there looks like.
And one thing, you know, when I was talking to us, for example, like grant applications or other things like that. And typically they are, you know, this support for these projects of the schools. Well, those are going to be implementing in South City, having South City planned because that's one of the projects.
I know they check first to make sure it meets the, it works with the plan before they send them to us. You can assign them.
And then we have our last one, just join us. B-PAC. And then we can have these as pocket slides, just in case the council member says, what are your roles and responsibilities? You could say, we've got it here, but they're hidden, so I doubt they will, yeah. Be surprised if they did. Okay, well, we can, what we can do is save this and then send it out to the committees so that y'all can think about it. And then. Okay, well, we can, um, what we can do is save this and then send it out to the committees, so that y'all can think about it, and then, um, that we all can also practice.
And for the B P A C members who are not presenting, you're of course always welcome to attend council, and if you're not able to attend, you can watch it on TV if you want to watch Daryl and Dylan present.
Yeah, or if we, if we miss something, well, suggest edits in the meantime, right, I mean, we can, we can still make it, make adjustments.
Yeah, so this will be, um, let's see, we'll need to get this. Uh, wrapped up like with them, oh, I'm starting to get to show them the calendar.
Oh, okay.
Probably the next week or two.
Yes.
He'll send it to us in the next week and then.
Oh, well, we'll send it, we'll send it to you tomorrow, but we want to like.
Finalize, we'll finalize it in the.
Yeah, just because it needs to get loaded up.
We have it. Yeah, I think we have about two weeks.
Two weeks.
We have to get it in our system by around the eighteenth.
Oh, I'm a little, I'm a week ahead, I was actually thinking we were already here, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Yes, you have about two weeks.
Yeah, we have.
Three weeks, okay.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you for presenting.
For letting us make a little bit.
Oh, this is great, this, this, I feel like for us too, this is incredibly helpful.
And I do think I would, I think having, like, let's just, I think talking about priorities and like drilling down into each of these would be a little bit, would be really helpful too, like when we're talking about. The connections and the, um, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I think like you said, we probably need to spend most of our time here for only five minutes, like, we'd go pretty fast. Yeah.
So we can do that, that's a really good item. Focus on.
Okay.
Thank you. Well.
I'm sorry, I, I have one last suggestion, can we let this into multiple slides? Or is that gonna take up too much time for five minutes?
Yeah, you could.
I'll just, I'll, I'll put, I'll leave that on the table, um. Consider changing stuff around, like, you can take out some of the active South City or combine the active South City slides, because I don't think we're gonna talk about the active South City slides that much.
Yeah. That's what they said, yeah, we can.
And then can, uh, Dylan and I make edits outside of this meeting, or is this pretty final?
I would say that, I mean, for mine too, since you can make, you know, uh, what would say cosmetic edits, but I, I think to make. Any changes to the priorities would.
Okay, perfect.
Have a commission discussion or community discussion.
All right.
I think that's fair, yeah, I think that sounds right.
Okay, uh, I'm assuming no public comments?
No public comments.
Items from B P A C members?
Nothing. Like I said, I'm just curious about that In-N-Out Burger and what it's gonna do to traffic there, but.
Yeah, me too, actually.
Um, so.
I mean, I tried to go to the D M V and couldn't get there, couldn't get In-N-Out over there.
I can give you an update, I mean, I can just explain where it is in the entitlements process, it's an active application, the applicant has submitted an application, it staff is reviewing it, they have submitted a transportation analysis. That staff has reviewed along with all of their other work, were required studies, we're likely going to be getting a, um. A peer review, hiring our own consultant to do a peer review of their traffic analysis to determine, you know, if there are traffic impacts or mitigation measures. Um, it'll, you know, it'll be going to design review board, planning commission, um.
Is there any, did we already pass the public comment part?
No, but I, I, I mean, it, it, it hasn't even gone to, I mean, it's at the very beginning of the process, like, there's.
Obviously voting no.
Well, it's, I mean, if you want to make a public.
Yeah, that's, how does that happen, or should I ask you after the meetings?
Talk about it after, I mean, you're, it, it is, any member of the public is welcome to submit.
Yes, as a member of the public.
But I, I would recommend, you know, there, there will be technical reports that will be available, which will include information about. Traffic impacts as well as potential measures that could help to reduce or mitigate impacts, so there will be much more information available.
Okay, good.
That that's not available yet.
Yeah.
Because.
If you're trying to go to D M V in Daly City at most time, you'll know why I'm worried.
Can we have this project as, as a B P A C item?
I don't think it's ready yet, it doesn't sound like.
Or when it's ready.
We can.
Or just, you know, any, any kind of project that will attract lots of automobiles, In-N-Out is a very auto-centric establishment, and it's right on El Camino. Where a lot of the bike improvements will part proposed, so I'm extremely concerned. Um, I have, I just want to say, I, I went to the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition Bike Summit last Thursday, courtesy of the city representing B P A C, and it was extremely exciting, I. Really well, I really liked how the bike coalition emphasizes, um, well, first of all, th- they've only in the last few years has the bike coalition been in San Mateo County, and so like, I know the new executive director. She's really been trying to push more bike advocacy in both counties, because if you kind of look at bike advocacy. In the Bay Area, San Mateo County has pretty much been nothing, and so the fact that the bike coalition has been spending a lot of resources in, in South City is, is great, um, I loved. I loved how, um, that there was such a strong emphasis on equity. And looking at transportation impacts from automobiles, beginning of the conference and all of the sessions kind of focused on that, I was actually really surprised that almost everyone there was. A professional, I'm, I'm a professional, but I was there representing B P A C, so, um, but almost everyone like was representing their employer, which I was surprised. I thought it was gonna be more members, since I also am a member of, um, the bike coalition, um, and yeah, I look, I look forward to. Uh, everything that is coming in the future, um, Mayor Coleman gave an amazing speech at the beginning, he, I don't know, uh, you probably gave him the statistics about. All the changes that have been happening in the city in terms of bike and pedestrian programming and infrastructure, I, I would love the copy of that, because I think, um, it's. It, it reflects a change of the political climate in South City, which I, I, I was super proud, and there were a lot of claps from. The audience from that, even if they don't live in South City, people came from all over the Bay Area to come to this, I think one person even raised their hand saying they flew here to get, get to the summit.
Wow, amazing.
Yeah, so, anyway.
Were there tons of bikes there?
Yeah, and there was bike corrals and bike valet, lots of people, you know, biked from Caltrain and the Centennial Way from Bart, people came from all over. Uh, that's, that's all I have.
Great. Well, for our items for staff, um, we kind of made our big announcement, which was that we have a new B P A C member, um, so as soon as he's sworn in, we'll have him, have him come to the meeting. Um, and then I was gonna also touch on the Silicon Valley Bike Summit, it was great, there were, I mean, how many people, you think, three hundred people?
Yeah, it was a lot busier than I thought it would be.
Yeah, it was, it was good, I've been in years past as well, and this just had such a good energy here, I think, people, you could just hear people were so complimentary of the L P R, the facility where it was held. And then lots of people spoke about, um, taking Bart and then coming down on Centennial Way to the L P R, really complimentary about that. And then our colleagues, uh, Billy and Tony helped lead two bike tours of the city, um, that were very well attended and, um. Just really great sessions and, um, the, the keynote speaker was Naomi Dorner, who is, um, she works for Nelson Nygaard, she was previously the. Equity and Inclusion Officer for the City of Seattle, and so she really spoke about El Camino Real and, um. Its history as a trading route for indigenous peoples and how it's obviously changed very much over the years and, um. Uh, yeah, it was great, it was just lots of focus on, um, the, the great work that's happening here with bike and pedestrian improvements, so it's really cool. Um, and then our last, um, update is that, um, we actually have Anthony from Silicon Valley Bike Coalition. Scheduled to come present to us in November and talk about the summit from their perspective. I think.
Oh.
Oh, we did? What's an alert about?
Silver alert.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
Okay. Um, so Anthony, I think it's gonna bring, he, he said he needed a bit more time after the, the summit to prepare a presentation, so. We can get more information about obviously what he's presenting, but maybe he'll have stats or something about all the folks who attended. Um, and then talking about stats, the police department is also, um, spotted to come in November, they weren't going to be able to process the Q, what would that be, Q three? Stats in time for the October meeting, so they're gonna be here in November, um, so do you mind if I have a side conversation with the dean for a second? We had talked about, yes, like October, but would we want to bring the B P A C priorities? So, what I just spoke with the dean about, which you heard very clearly, was would we want to bring, we didn't have any items for October, so we're gonna propose canceling it, but if we wanted to, we could. Oh, they're not on the screen anymore, but we could, um, discuss in more detail the impact priorities, if we wanted that to be a dedicated meeting. Or we could.
It would be after the city council, or the nation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we think that slide is sufficient, or do we think we need a whole meeting for it?
I think we just have a meeting over.
Yeah.
Good, fine. Maybe what we can do.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, I mean, maybe, maybe we bring it up in the future, especially when we have our new member at some point.
Like, would we do it when we have, I mean, hopefully, seven members would be great, particularly when we have new people and we can kind of do it.
Have a restart.
Yeah, a little reasonable reboot.
Yeah.
Therefore. Can I make an announcement?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my announcement is just that this is Kelsey's last B P A C meeting.
Officially the last.
Could have been the last.
Could have been, but I was like, no, 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 I need one more, so I just wanted to.
Happy to see you again.
Yeah.
Yes, we're surprised.
I know you were waiting for it.
You can come to the next meeting.
That's a member of the public.
So, Kelsey, so just want to thank Kelsey, she's talking about flying her.
We really appreciate you.
Yeah, but we, but so, huge thank you to Kelsey for her amazing work with the city, um, and just with her, all, all the work she does, I mean.
Oh, yes.
It's been an incredible time working with her, we do have a new administrative assistant too, starting tomorrow, which is wonderful, and her name is Cynthia, and, um, she. Is a, um, she comes to us with much experience from a park district in San Mateo, she's a really wonderful addition, so you'll meet her the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, try to be honest.
I thought you all could do it.
That was it, yeah.
We, we didn't beat you up too much, right?
Oh, God, no, 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 no.
I did. Do you laugh?
No. We have great ones. Yes, that yours are great, not leaving because of you, so.
Did you, did you staff other committees or commissions?
Yeah, yeah, a lot, so, um, before, uh, engineering took it over again, I did traffic advisory commission, the parking place commission, did this one. We do zoning administrator and then planning commission.
Zoning administrator, oh, wow.
Yeah, so I do five, when I first started here at five, now it's three.
And zoning administrator, it's like, plus twice a year.
But there's still minutes, there's still all the work.
You still have to notice it, I mean, it's.
Still in the same kind of work as a planning commission meeting, it's just, yeah, we don't have them so often.
Yeah. But you get one tomorrow.
Yes.
This is the meeting for you.
Yeah, we've busy.
Absolutely, thank you, we will miss you.
Yes, we will, thank you, I appreciate that.
I mean, you, all the little things for us to make the meetings go better.
You need water.
Yeah, yes, I always finish one, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion adjourn.
Well, let's talk about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, roll call, at least that's what.
Okay, I can do roll call to adjourn.
Roll call in the past, or adjourn, no, it's just. Uh, media adjourn at the time, and then you say, one motion, second motion.
Done.
All right.
Oh, thank you, everyone.
Excellent, thank you, so we, so we have the.